Number one. Let Commissioner Fields do the prayer.
Embiggen your prayers, boys.
Remember my son and daughter-in-law, they both have COVID-19, but they're doing okay.
Remember Commissioner Tally here also.
Remember David Cordy's family.
Any more?
First prayer. Lord, we thank you for the day. Lord, more than anything, we thank you for all the, what you give us, Lord. We thank you for the day. We thank you for the sunshine, just to open our eyes and see another day, Lord, the blessings that we don't have to have, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for letting us go to bed and wake up another day. We thank you for the blood that was shed for us and the forgiveness that you give us, Lord. We ask you be with us during this meeting and help us just to make good judgments and help us make good cause, Lord. Help us do what we were put here to do. We ask you to forgive our sins and their shortcomings, Lord. We ask you to watch over us, Lord. Go ahead and forgive us when we step off that path that we're surely going to, Lord. Good night, everybody. Amen.
Mr. Tally, can you lead us into place? You don't want to. Mr. Alvis, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need to take care of the executive order now or call it up?
We need to take care of that, but we also need to make sure that each person lets us know, acknowledges that they are attending virtually.
Okay. We, we need to take care of business of the executive order number sixty at Governor Bailey's order. We have to have a motion that we meet by the zone. Did I state that right? Motion is that being ordered?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barker, second by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Can each Commissioner, when I call your name, acknowledge that you are attending electronically, please? Commissioner DeWitt?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Houseright?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Clontz?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Chairman, we have four Commissioners attending virtually.
Okay, we'll do the roll call.
Chairman, we have twenty Commissioners present.
Thanks for having me, Bert. Would do the conflicts of interest?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Those of you that acknowledge you have an indirect conflict of interest, namely Jeff Barrett and for this meeting Danny Alvis, do you acknowledge that indirect conflict of interest for all actions and purposes of this meeting?
Yes, sir, Captain.
But the record reflects that both were done so.
At this time, I'd like to recommend, to recognize Commissioner Trey Jesse. At this time, I'd like to recognize Police Chief Mount Carmel, Ken Luntz Jr., Vice Chief Scott Halli, Officer Kenneth White. You want to go over what happened?
On October twenty-third, two thousand twenty, about seven-thirty PM, a wrong-way driver made his way eastbound in westbound lanes of eleven W. Officer White, who was off duty at the time, was traveling westbound on eleven W unaware of what was taking place in front of him. As he got to the incident, he found people driving erratically trying to avoid his car head on. Officer White took action, using his own personal vehicle to stop the wrong-way driver from continuing down eleven W, which may have proved fatal. And because of that, we honored him and gave him a life-saving award for the town of Mount Carmel because of his actions and his self-driven duty to act while off duty. I have no doubt he saved several lives that night.
At this time, I'd like to read Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and the Honorable General Lee, Mayor, this twenty-third day of November twenty twenty, Commends Kenneth Wayne Wright, Junior, Mount Carmel Public Safety Officer, LaBauer, and Dedication. Whereas this commendation is presented in recognition of public safety and critical thinking of Public Safety Officer Kenneth Wayne White, Senior. Officer White went above and beyond in calling duty on October twenty-third of twenty twenty. Whereas your actions reflect highly not only upon yourself, but also on the image and reputation of the Mount Carmel Police Department, and whereas your physical fitness, critical thinking, problem-solving skills, meditation skills, strong moral character, devotion to your community are all important qualities for a dedicated police officer. Thank you, Officer White, for exhibiting these qualities in Mount Carmel and Hawkins County. Therefore, be it resolved, with the authority vested in the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Mayor General Lee, we're awarded this commendation on this twenty-third of November twenty twenty. Is there any other recognitions or commendations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mark Linkusworth. All those that don't know me, I served as Commissioner in the Fifth District before. I'm coming for you tonight to ask for nomination for Mr. Metz to sit tonight. I think I'll be a good asset with being served on the Commission before with several of you that sit here tonight and with Mr. Metz. So I'm asking tonight if you would just consider me. I think I've been great help, like I said, being on the Commission before, taking the classes through CPAS, and with the people I met while serving on this, I think I've been a good asset for y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Is there any other who should be recognized?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jason Roach. I'm also asking for a nomination to the fifth seat that's been vacated by Mr. Metz. I'm currently serving as Principal Rockville Middle School. I've been first year there. Served for Moore'sburg Elementary for four years, and I taught social studies in Hamilton County before that. Lifetime Hawkins County. Matter of fact, I'm descended from Major Moore, Moore'sburg's named after. Just, I think I bring a different perspective, a new perspective, a fresh perspective that I can bring to the Commission. I've served my community in various ways. I was a member of two hundred and seventy-eighth Armored Cavalry Regiment that deployed in support of Operation Raking Creek in three, two thousand four, two thousand five. So I was a real veteran of Hawkinsville, came out of the start. And I just think I could bring a little bit of a different point of view. And though I have not had an opportunity to serve in elected position before, I've served with the state, working on different social standards and things like that with Department of Education. I also served as a pastor for about ten years, where I led a lot of business meetings. And while I'm no longer serving in ministry, that certainly helped shape who I am today. So I'm asking for your consideration as nominee to fill that fifth district seat. And if I get a chance to work with y'all, I look forward to doing so. Thank you.
Do we have, do we have any other recognitions or commendations? If not, is there any office reports or committee reports? If not, motion approved, minutes being ordered?
Motion approved.
That motion was by Dawson Fields, second by
All right. Those attending virtually, this is to approve last month's minutes. Commissioner DeWitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Houseright?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Clontz?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bridwell?
Everybody else on the board?
Mr. Thacker, Mr. Harrell. Thank you. Twenty yes.
Moving on to the resolutions, twenty twenty eleven zero one.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and Member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, this twenty-third day of November twenty twenty, the approval, the resolution references approval to assign James J. Summers' lease agreement with Hawkins County for a hangar at the Hawkins County Airport to Dr. George M. Testerman for the remainder of said lease ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas Mr. James J. Summers had a lease agreement with Hawkins County for a hangar at Hawkins County Airport. The lease is set to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Summers passed away on May the fifteenth, twenty twenty. The estate of James J. Summers, Southern County Chancery Court, probate division twenty-nine PR two-three-three-seven-six, desires to sublease the remainder of the lease to Dr. George M. Testerman. Paragraph number four of the lease states that said parties shall not sign or sublet this contract in whole or in part without written consent of the first party. The airport committee met on the seventeenth day of November twenty twenty and voted unanimously to allow the estate to sublet the lease remainder to Dr. George M. Testerman. And whereas the estate of James J. Summers wishes to assign the lease agreement to Dr. George M. Testerman for the remainder of said lease, and therefore be resolved that approval be given for the assignment of the estate of Mr. James J. Summers' lease agreement to be transferred to Dr. George M. Testerman for the remainder of said lease ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. After expiration of said lease, Dr. George M. Testerman shall negotiate any further contract with the Hawkins County, and the Chairman also move.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Barker. Is there any discussion? And would everyone please use your microphones so that everyone can hear a little better? No discussion? Everyone cast your vote.
Mr. DeWitt?
Yes.
Mr. Houseright?
Yes.
Mr. Trent?
Yes.
Mr. Clontz?
Yes.
Twenty yes.
I'm sorry?
I don't have the
Second one.
Right here.
The first one, I'm sorry.
The first one.
First one.
All I got? Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty eleven zero-two, interviewed by Commissioner Davidson.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session, this twenty-third day of November twenty twenty, resolution in reference to Fifth District Commission Seat Nomination. Whereas the resignation was submitted on ten thirty-one twenty twenty by John Metz, the Commissioner in the Fifth District of Hawkins County. Notice of vacancy has been given to the full legislative body and also to the newspaper and general circulation ten days prior to the meeting. And whereas Mr. Glenn Davis, small match, Jason Roach, to fill the vacancy of John Metz in the Fifth District of Hawkins County. Now therefore be it resolved that Jason Roach be nominated to fill the vacancy of Commissioner in the Fifth District. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Commissioner DeWitt, I accept the motion.
Don't need to. Okay, is there any other nominations?
I've got one. Mark Linkus.
Is there any other nominations? Mr. Chairman, make a motion, nomination cease.
Second.
Motion, if nomination ceases and second, do we have to have a roll call on that, or can we both?
Who's second? That motion nomination cease.
Nancy's second. Can we do a voice vote on that?
We can.
All in favor of nomination cease, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Now I guess we'll have to do
It'll, it'll be by a roll call. And as I call each Commissioner's name, please acknowledge whether you
I got one question before.
Have any other leave?
Do we?
There are two. Mr. Jason Roach and Mr. Mark Linkus. Okay. This will be by voice vote for each of you. So when I call your name, please acknowledge whether you wish to vote to fill that Fifth District Commission seat for Jason Roach or Mark Linkus. Okay? Commissioner DeWitt?
Jason Roach.
Commissioner Gibson?
Jason Roach.
Valerie Goins?
Jason Roach.
Danny Alvis?
Mark Linkus.
Nancy Barker?
Jason Roach.
Sybil Von Trent?
Mark Linkus.
Bobby Edens?
Jason Roach.
Tom Kern?
Jason Roach.
Charles Houseright?
Linkus.
Dawson Fields?
Linkus.
Jeff Barrett?
Linkus.
Mike Correll?
Linkus.
Glenda Davis?
Roach.
Donnie Tally?
Linkus.
Hannah Speaks?
Roach.
Charles Thacker?
Linkus.
George Bridwell?
Roach.
Rick Brewer?
Linkus.
Larry Clontz?
Mr. Roach.
Raymond Jesse?
Linkus.
Mr. Chairman, it's ten to ten.
We have a ten, ten, tie. We face eleven. Secure that, so I'd like to
Be a part of time.
No, he already voted. I've done voting.
The mayor's what he said, the mayor's
Oh, no, the mayor can't, but he's not chairman. I guess, would you, would either one of you all like to come up and, both of you come up and speak? And Mr. Roach?
Well, I guess, as far as my qualifications for serving in this position, I kind of gave you a flyover of what I can bring to the table. I have served in leadership in various areas and done a lot of different things outside of education as well. So I guess, if there's anything specific I can answer for anyone on the Commission, I'd like a chance to do that. Because I know some of you have given me a couple of questions before, so.
I'll ask them. I'd say probably a lot of the Commissioners in the back of their heads wonder how, if you can be unbiased when you're voting on issues related to the school system and school funding.
And I appreciate the commission, or that question. I do think I can. I believe my character speaks. If you were to look in my history, I try to remain as objective about different leadership positions that I've been in as possible. I like to look at the facts and I like to make determinations based on the facts that I've been given. And I've already spoken with my director that I am a taxpayer of the county. However, I do believe that I'm always going to be a, sometimes the position I want. And I certainly would love to look at that in a objective manner. And if there was ever a time that I would be voting on something that might really benefit me, I certainly would have to abstain. I don't want to come, you know, have a conflict that I can benefit from. But aside from that, I do believe I can be objective. And I think those of you that know me, and I know a few of you, know that my character will say, speak to that in the past. So I will promise to you tonight that I'll be objective in my decisions and go by the facts and what I feel is right for the taxpayers of Hawkins County. Because I've been a taxpayer of Hawkins County, I've been a citizen of Hawkins County longer than I've been employed by the Hawkins County school system. So I certainly do believe I can be objective. Are there any other questions for me?
No.
So I'll end this by saying, whether I get to serve with you all tonight or not, I do want to say that I feel like a fresh set of eyes would benefit the Commission in a lot of ways. I think I've had an opportunity to accomplish quite a bit in my thirty-five years. And in doing so, I gained some experience in different areas. I worked on my loading docket over the minimum while I was in college. I used the GI Bill to pay for college. I have, you know, just like I said, served in different capacities in churches. And I feel like I've experienced, I've gained. I'm not able to bring sense of, and one thing I'm kind of good at, I feel like I try to bring people together. I do the best that I can in my school and in other areas, in other positions, I help different communities, people working together. I have no will against anyone here tonight. I certainly would like a chance, just to be taken care of, that's all. And given the opportunity, I'd like to prove to you all that I can serve in a way that brings something positive, brings some lucidity, I do this and that. So I'd like to ask you, if you would consider me to change your vote if you voted the other way. However, if the former Commissioner Linkus wins tonight, I'll shake his hand because he's a good man. And I have not a thing in the world against Mark Linkus. He's, he will be my Commissioner and I'll be proud to call him Commissioner. But I'd like a chance to serve if you all would consider me. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something before Mark speaks. I want all the Commissioners that was on the board with him to remember, he saved the county a lot of money in the convenience center, the trucks. He put a lot of work into that. Didn't have to, but he was working for the county. And I don't know if we're looking at what he's done in the past or not, but just try to remember that when we get ready to vote again. Mr. Linkus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I can tell you everything that most of you already know about me. I never abstained from a vote. I did, was the Chairman of the Solid Ways, and I think we did save the money, save the county a whole lot of money. When I was, when I was on there, we were spending over eighty thousand dollars a year just to fix the trucks. Well, we worked to get the trucks. Now we drive the new trucks in the county. And after I was off the Commission, they asked me if I'd self-in for a little while till they found somebody that would take over that spot. And I did do that for the county. I've served this county in every way possible. I continue to serve, I'll continue to serve this county wholeheartedly. I've got five kids, or six kids, sorry. I've got a little girl still in high school. I've got eleven grandkids. I also served in the Army during wartime. And, you know, it's my privilege to come back to my hometown and to serve. And each one of y'all I served with, can't say that I didn't work with you. I worked on things that, you know, wasn't, I wasn't even on the committee. And I worked with the Sheriff's Department, with each of the offices, and I still do that now. And I haven't got a thing to say back about Mr. Roach. He is a good man. His wife is a good woman, but I bring experience. And that's what, you know, right now, I think I'd be a big asset to you because I do bring experience and I do love the county, and I've proven that with my service that I had with y'all before. And I'd like to continue it. And I plan on running again for County Commissioner of the Fifth District in our next election. So I'm not going to say anything back. If you want to stick with your vote, stick with your vote. If you want to go with me, I would appreciate it. Because I am going to do what's right for the county and work with each officer and with each one of y'all. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll ask the clerk to call it over again.
All right. Please acknowledge whether you wish to vote for Jason Roach or Mark Linkus to fill the Commission seat. Commissioner Alvis?
Mark Linkus.
Commissioner Edens?
Jason Roach.
Davis?
Roach.
Goins?
Jason Roach.
Correll?
Linkus.
Kern?
Roach.
Barker?
Roach.
Barrett?
Linkus.
Gibson?
Roach.
Trent?
Mark Linkus.
Bridwell?
Roach.
Speaks?
Roach.
Jesse?
Linkus.
Tally?
Linkus.
Houseright?
Linkus.
Clontz?
Roach.
Fields?
Linkus.
Thacker?
Linkus.
DeWitt?
Jason Roach.
Brewer?
Linkus.
It's ten to ten.
We're allowed to vote one more time if anyone wishes to change. We're allowed to vote one more time. If anyone wishes to change their vote, this will be the last vote. And if we can't do anything tonight, then we'll have to come back next month and try it again. We're going to vote again.
I guess we recess in five minutes.
Yeah. We've had, he's asked for a recess. We'll recess for five minutes.
No, we can't recess.
They can't recess.
No recess.
According to their attorney, we can't recess until the spokes take it. And after the spokes take it, we'll take it. We'll take it five minutes.
All right, everybody ready? Mr. Tally.
Mark Linkus.
Mr. Fields.
Linkus.
Clontz.
Mr. Hohler, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clontz, your vote for Roach or Linkus?
Roach.
Mark DeWitt.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Jason Roach.
Speaks. Jesse.
Linkus.
Backer.
Linkus.
Brewer.
Linkus.
Trent.
Linkus.
Gibson.
Roach.
Davis.
Roach.
Alvis.
Mark Linkus.
Barrett.
Linkus.
Kern.
Roach.
Edens.
Roach.
Houseright.
Linkus.
Bridwell.
Roach.
Harrell.
Linkus.
Goins.
Roach.
Barker.
Roach.
Fine. Ten to ten.
I guess we'll, I guess we'll try to do this again in our next meeting. Move on to twenty twenty eleven zero three.
I'm going to pull it all.
You're going to pull that later?
Pull. I'll pull. I'll pull the next piece of water.
Oh, all right, cool.
I've had, we're ready for resolution.
Resolution twenty twenty eleven zero four by Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission and Director Saxon met this twenty-third day of November twenty twenty. Resolution in reference to appointment of Amy Skelton and Josh Russell and reappointment of Susan Armstrong to the Hawkins County Industrial Board for a six-year term, the terms beginning August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Whereas three seats on the Hawkins County Industrial Board have all members receiving recommendations by the industrial board. Appointments filling terms of giving are now and grant price designed from the board were recommended Amy Skelton, time ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty. Joshua Russell, time ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Reappointment Susan Armstrong, time ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Therefore, be it resolved that, that aforementioned three people be appointed and appointed, reappointed and to the industrial board with the term of office for each being six years, beginning September first, twenty twenty, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, October.
Motion by Commissioner Barker. Second by Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrell.
This has not went through the industrial committee with the commissioners. And I'd like to make a motion to pull this resolution till it goes through the committee.
You can't pull, you can ask. Make the bar.
I'll take, I'll make a motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tally.
No, no discussion down on the motion.
We're going to vote on table motion.
That's the second we have to count it on. Is there a res? Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, I mean, I got questions, and we have not had an industrial committee.
The motion on the floor. We can't discuss it, we're going to vote on it.
Okay, we're ready, John.
But yes is to table and no is to not table.
Those attending virtually, this is a motion to table on resolution twenty twenty eleven oh four. Commissioner DeWitt.
No.
Commissioner Houseright.
Yes.
Mr. Trent.
Yes.
Commissioner Clontz.
No.
Thank you. We still need Commissioner Kern and Harrell.
Commissioner Kern, Mr. Harrell. Cash to try.
Let me adjust the batteries. Probably the battery. All right, that is twelve yes, eight no.
Table. Carers. Next item on the resolution.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commission, Director Saxon, met July July this, met twenty-third day of November twenty twenty, approval of sixty-month lease for a Caracera copier from Rogers for offer supply to the juvenile service office. And I probably wish it better. So, whereas Hawkins County Juvenile Services Office sent a copper lease for Xerox that had expired and wished to lease a machine from Rogers for, again, I'm going to skip the name, copper, for sixty months will be a hundred and sixty dollars thirty-one cents per month, that includes mains and two thousand copies per month. All copies over two thousand will be charged at point zero zero six cents per copy and billed monthly. Therefore, be resolved that approval be given to enter into said lease agreement for a bug records copy machine by for the Hawkins County Juvenile Service Office. Money which will, where the money will come from. We hope to order, enter an out-of-order resolution to rectify this, so I can have these three are pulled.
I'd like to pull them at six seven.
We don't have to have a second. So all three of those budget amendments have been pulled.
Mr. Gibson, number six, is that one, are you sure that was one that needed to be pulled, or was it seven?
Six, seven, and eight.
No, number six isn't.
Okay, you are correct. Number six. See, dealing with Rogers. I go back to twenty twenty eleven oh six. The Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission, met January 16th this day twenty-third day of November twenty twenty. It's a reference, resolution references a budget amendment, and it says the above increases are to the budget expenditures and review of COVID-nineteen grant for the Rogers Field Center. The grant will come through East Tennessee area. Agency on Aging and Disability requires no funding from the county, and Mr. Chairman, I so move. And I do apologize for the misunderstanding on my part.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Alvis. Is there any discussion on resolution twenty twenty eleven zero six?
Writing on very.
Yes.
Commissioner Houseright. Commissioner Houseright. Mr. Trent. Thank you. Mr. Trent.
Yes.
Mr. Clontz.
Yes.
Thank you. Twenty yes.
Next item now would be twenty twenty eleven zero seven. You're pulling seven.
Sir, I'm going to pull seven, eight, and nine.
Seven, eight, and nine. Okay, we'll go to ten then.
Mr. Speaker, to get this set up.
Okay, to the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission, Director Saxon met this twenty-third day of November twenty twenty, resolution in reference to budget amendment to just above decrees, the grant will be used to remain portion of the grant for the COVID-nineteen have to be extended, but remain portion will come from the funds in respective funds.
Just a minute, we'll go run into this, we have to pack them all up.
By Commissioner Barker, is there any discussion? If not, cash your vote.
We're voting on the resolution twenty twenty eleven ten. Commissioner DeWitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Houseright.
Yes.
Commissioner Trent.
Yes.
Commissioner Clontz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Twenty yes.
Next item is the notaries, Commissioner Fields.
Brutal of Republicans, Vicki J. Green is self, her address in Nashville, Nashville, PA. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, second by Commissioner Barker, is there any discussion? Not everyone cast your vote?
Commissioner DeWitt. Commissioner Houseright.
Yes.
Motion carries. We've got two out of order, this is a motion to suspend.
Mr. Chairman, my motion's been ruled.
That motion was by Commissioner Fields, second by Commissioner Gibson.
Gibson, thank you. Hold on, this one's second. Did you get the button?
That's fine, that's fine.
So it's, uh, Jesse.
Motion by Commissioner Jesse, second by Commissioner Gibson to suspend the rules. Are we ready to vote to suspend the rules?
We are ready.
Everyone cast your vote to suspend the rules.
All right, those attending virtually, this is a vote to suspend the rules. Commissioner DeWitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Houseright.
Yes.
Commissioner Trent.
Yes.
Commissioner Clontz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Everyone else, vote, Commissioner Bridwell, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Brewer.
Twenty yes.
Rules are suspended. We'll move on to out-of-order resolution twenty twenty eleven zero one. That's introduced by Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commission and Director Saxon met this twenty-third day of November two thousand and twenty. Resolution in reference, approval to apply for and accept a part planning grant up to sixty thousand dollars from Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation with a twelve thousand dollar local match in funds for Hawkins County with the match to be split between Hawkins County and Rogers Field. Whereas the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation is making available to local government to grant, and grant's purpose to help counties and cities develop tenure plans for the recreational areas of the counties or cities. The grant funding will be up to sixty thousand dollars for Hawkins County ten seat with a twelve thousand dollar local match to be split between Hawkins County and Rogers Field. The grant fund will be a tenure plan for Hawkins County and Rogers Field. Hawkins County would be the lead applicant. A joint applicant FPRF plant, planning grant will have a total project cost of sixty thousand dollars with the joint applicants providing a twenty percent match, twelve thousand dollars, and the state providing grant funds equal to eight percent of the total project cost of forty-eight thousand dollars. The grants are a reimbursement type grant with a lead applicant being responsible for initial expense payments, supplying reimbursement documents, and receiving the reimbursed funds at a rate of eight percent of the documented expenditures, not to exceed the total grant amount based on application type. Therefore, be resolved, approval is given to apply for and accept said grant if awarded from the Tennessee Department of Tyrionism Enhancement in the amount up to sixty thousand dollars with a twelve thousand dollar local match for attaining a tenure plan. Further, the county mayor, Jim Lee, is authorized to sign all documents pertaining to this grant.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett, second by Commissioner Barker, is there any discussion? If not, everyone cast your vote.
Those attending virtually, we are voting on resolution twenty twenty eleven oh one, the out-of-order. Just one second. Okay, all right. Commissioner DeWitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Houseright.
Yes.
Commissioner Trent.
Yes.
Commissioner Clontz.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Edens, yours is good to take. Thank you. Twenty yes.
Motion carries. Next item is, there's not a number on this, I guess it's zero two. Next item is, there's not a number on this, I guess it's zero two, uh, introduced by Commissioner Gibson.
Little bit of the background before I start this, when we had a meeting the other day, it, the proposal and the three that were pulled was that each one of the departments be in highway, solid waste, their, the money would be coming out of that with the rest, all the remaining balance of their COVID money going into general fund, and they did not think it required, you know, as far as coming out of their budget. So, we revisited and Eric worked up some different scenarios and sent them out by email, and the resolution number three, yeah, I think it's gonna be the best, in my opinion, if, I'm gonna put it on the floor, the number, the third option, and we'll get on the floor and be able to discuss. The Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, Member of Hopkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session, this 23rd day of November 2020, Resolution reference amended to Resolution 2020, that's 1001, the private highest department, one time, had to pay the government's local, local government support grant, whereas on August 24, 2020, Regular Session, this is the Hopkins County Board of Commission, Resolution 2020, away, 12,000, minimum balance, Hopkins County employees, one time hazard paid in about $1,000 for a full-time employee and 500 for part-time employees, with funding coming from the government's local government support grant, and whereas on October 26, 2020, Regular Session, meeting Hopkins County Board of Commissioners, Resolution 2020, that's 1001, was passed, allowing full-time and part-time employees of the Hopkins County General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Highway Fund to be paid at one time hazard pay for the governor's local government support grant, and with an additional funding need to come from the designated fund balance, and whereas the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Highway Fund are separate funds and have an undesignated fund balance, Resolution 2020-1001 did not specify which undesignated fund balance to take any additional funds from if needed. Therefore, should not take any from the undesignated fund balance from the other general funds, an order of apartment to be paid must be established, and whereas the unexpendanted balance of the local governor's support grant is $86,123, the following is suggested order of payment, and the total need for the one-time hazards paid to the employees, number one, highway department, $41,673 will come from the grant fund, solid waste department, $22,043 will come from the grant fund, the general fund employees, $112,909, the balance of $22,470 grant fund, and $90,502 from the general fund, the general fund undesignated fund balance, therefore being resolved that approval be given to make a one-time hazard paid $1,000 to full-time employees and paying $500 to part-time employees in the order of highway department, solid waste department, general, general fund employees as per above reference allocation, and further being resolved that this resolution applied in the budget number three must also be approved. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Rouse, is there any discussion or question? Mr. Harrell?
Is the elected officials in this camp that get this bonus or?
No, Dave.
I do not know for a fact, but I think yes, I think Eric made a comment that they're, that the elected officials were in there.
I wanna make a motion to take the elected officials out of this bonus.
Make a motion to amend this.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Harrell, second by Commissioner Gibson, to amend this to take the elected officials out of this bonus. Is there, any, any other, any discussion on the amendment?
Commissioner Harrell needs to push his button where it says motion to amend, please. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Just second. Who seconded that motion, please?
Mr. Gibson.
Be just a minute. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, we'll have to vote.
Okay, we're ready to vote on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, yes?
We can vote on the board.
Yes. We're voting on the board.
This is, uh, those attending virtually, this is amendment to Resolution out of order 2020-1103, uh, to take elected officials out of the hazard pay bonus. So, Commissioner Duett?
No.
Commissioner Houseright?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Very well, so I'm going to abstain.
I can repeat that for you.
Please.
This is a motion to amend Resolution 2020-1103 by Commissioner Harrell, second by Commissioner Keith Gibson to take the elected officials. To take all elected officials out of.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Clontz?
Yes.
Thank you. 19 yes, one abstain, or no, 19 yes, one no, I'm sorry.
Motion carries on amendment, now we're vote on the original resolution as amended.
I still got questions about that resolution.
Mr. Harrell?
You taking money from the highway department and the solid waste department, are they gonna reimburse back this money or?
Mr. Harrell, this is what we're correcting, the original one will take money out of their budget, this does not take money out of this budget, this is paying theirs, they're putting 41, like in the highway, putting 41,673 into their budget to pay that. So, everything will end up coming out of either the, the general funds, undesignated fund balance, and the remainder of the COVID money. So, this fixes that issue that you're talking about.
Is there any other discussion? If, if not, everybody cast your vote.
Those commissioners attending virtually, this is the vote on res, out of order Resolution 2020-1103 as amended. Commissioner Duett?
Yes.
Commissioner Houseright?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Abstain.
Mr. Clontz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thacker, you, you, your vote that take.
19 yes, one abstain.
Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Yes.
No, I'll give my summary then.
Yes, that's the one. That's the one we skipped over.
We have another?
Yes.
Yeah, we have another.
I'm, I'm sorry, hold on one second, there, Mr. Rouse, we got another out-of-order resolution. Unless you need to speak right now.
I, I just wanted to say that Commissioner Von Trent was instrumental in working with Mr. Jesse on getting this gentleman recognized back here, and I think he did an outstanding job, and there's also a no funding paid for you too, isn't there?
There was, I'm sorry.
Did you share that with us, how we go about doing that?
Uh, I believe it's, um, yeah, it's over, it's been taken down.
Oh, it has? Okay.
Mr. Gibson, you recognize?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, Members of Hopkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session, this 23rd day of October 2020, is October, being November, Resolution reference approval to accept the Carriage Act Part IV grant up to $30,000 from the Tennessee Department of Transportation Aerodynamic Division with no local match funding for the Hopkins County to complete roof repairs at the Hopkins County Airport, whereas the Tennessee Department of Transportation Aerodynamic Division is making available to local governments a grant through the Carriage Act Part IV. The grant funding will be up to $30,000 for Hopkins County, Tennessee, with no local match, the grant funds will be used to upgrade and facilitate roof repairs at the Hopkins County Airport. Carriage Act Part IV funds can be used for any purpose, which airport revenues may also be used, grant funds may be used to reimburse airport operational and maintenance expenses directly related to the airport incurred over the January 20, January the 20th, 2020. Grant funds also may be used to reimburse, grant these payments of debt service, where such payments occur on or after April 14, 2020, Carriage Act grant are 100% reimbursable grants, airport will submit an invoice including all required documentation and provide proof of payment to receive reimbursement from T-Dog. Therefore, be resolved with approval, it's given to accept said grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation Aerodynamic Division in amount of $30,000, and with no local match for upgrades to facilitate the facilities of the Hopkins County Airport, Bay Area, and Penn Attorney are authorized to sign any and all necessary documents to facilitate this grant. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Barker, and I apologize, that, that out-of-order resolution was sent. I didn't bring it, I apologize, Mr. Gibson, for overlooking that.
Well, I, I overlooked it too, 'cause I don't remember getting, I said I did.
Is there any discussion on this out-of-order resolution? If not, everyone cast your vote.
Those attending virtually, this is on out-of-order Resolution 2020-1102, Commissioner Duett?
Yes.
Commissioner Houseright?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Clontz?
Yes.
Thank you. 20 yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Brewer, I would like to add this also, that money is gonna be more than enough to do the roof, and there are gonna be a few other repairs that we are gonna be able to make at the airport at this moment.
I have a, a comment tonight, and it's been brought to my attention that, uh, our next meeting, getting real close to Christmas, even though it's gonna be the third Monday, we, we have had some people try to request if we could move that meeting up, and I guess we would need a motion to do that, is that right, Mr. Phillips?
Move it up to, uh, 14th?
Move it up to the 14th, still the 21st.
You go ahead and get the resolutions today, they're, they're two weeks before.
So, the resolutions, when we do, uh, the resolutions would be due the last day of November, the 30th day of November, resolutions will be due in my office by 4:00 AM, then the budget meeting would be then, whenever the budget meeting come in, I guess, the 7th or 8th, whenever they even need.
What's the pleasure, Commissioner?
It's really hard to get the meeting made together, I'm not sure what the time.
Would you, uh, be good with that? Answer?
And what can do, it's, is, there's no way to get everything completed and out to the commission unless everybody would accept it by email, because it takes a day to work it up and then a couple days to get it to them, so they're not gonna get it till the weekend before the meeting is on Monday.
Like Commissioner Barker said, if we have to have the meeting, but if there's no other committees to be able to make, plus get the resolution to them.
So, everybody's good, we're just leaving it like this?
Yes.
Motion carries, man, one?